Let us bow down our heads and feel the presence of the Lord. Let us pray in the name of the Father, in the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Heavenly, loving Father, we thank you for giving us this wonderful day. Thank you for the gift of life that you have given us. Lord, thank you for this wonderful opportunity that may we be able to be a catalyst of change to our community. Lord, as we start our session today, may you continue to guide and bless each and every one of us, especially our Presiding Officer. Lord, guide us and bless us and protect us. Give us the strength of mind, give us the wisdom for us to decide what is best for our community, our beloved Isulan. Lord, protect our loved ones, protect our staff, our families. Lord, we know that without you, we can do nothing. We entrust everything to you. Be sweet and free in the mighty name of Jesus your Son. Amen.
In the name of the Father, in the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Hello. Please raise our right hands to recite the Councillor's Creed. I am Philippine Councillor mandated by law to enact measures and ordinances that rebound to the general will for happiness, peace, and prosperity. I believe in the public service above self at the guidance principle of act myself for rights of local station. May the Almighty guide my mind and my heart that I shall be true to my constituents and the Filipino people.
So, Madam Secretary, let's have a roll call.
Honorable Arnold Armada, Honorable Carlo Piado, Honorable Arjun K. Palasiggi, Honorable Moises Dular, Honorable Ryan Dumaran, Honorable Darlene Lama, Honorable Maria Chenerin Mihya, Honorable Marie Blight Cartuhano Garingo, Honorable Marvin Dalanon, Honorable Tophard Dorana, Honorable Wetchun Foskablo. Honorable Presiding Officer, so at this moment there are... So, at this moment, there are eight members who are present. Seven members are present and four members are absent, Your Honor. Those absent are Honorable Ryan Dumaran, Honorable Marie Blight Cartuhano Garingo, and Honorable Maria Generalin Mihiya, and Honorable Joffre Dorana, Your Honor, except for Honorable Garingo, Your Honor, who informed us that she cannot attend the session due to she's not feeling well, Your Honor. Those members who are absent did not inform us as to the reason why they are absent in today's session, Your Honor.
Okay, so anyway, there's a quorum, so quorum is dictated. So, let's proceed.
We are now under reading and consideration of the minutes of the previous session. We have the previous minutes as of March 24, 2025, Your Honor.
March 24, 2025.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Moises Dular.
If there is no comment or correction about the minutes on previous minutes dated the 24th day of March, 25th, I'm up for it's adoption.
Okay, so the minutes of our regular session held on March 24, 2025 is hereby adopted.
So, Your Honor, we are now on the privilege hour.
Okay, so any member would like to render a privileged speech. Honorable William Foskablo.
Good morning, everyone. So, I would like to open again what's been happening sa aton nga area di ra banda, which is kapila naman nato na give privilege in sa session. But before, may araw kami gi-prepare mga clips kung ano gakatabo every midnight sa aton nga area. So, pwede natin ma-flash ang mga video sa aton drug racing, kadagabi na na siabe. Oo. May ban pang clips. May ma pa lang dong. So, Mr. Chair, as we can see, every midnight, ang munugin ang sitwasyon di ra. But if we can call the attention of our PNP to take immediate action sa kung ano man ang katabo sa aton nga area, kay kadugay naman ina ang problema sa aton.
Honorable Arjun.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dagdag lang po sa information ni Honorable Foskablo, Mr. Chair. As per information, bully lang mangidaw sa mga PNP taang ginaanuhan nila sina kay may mga time nga ginalibutan doon na sila sa PNP. So, mabungkag sila, gatambay sila sa May 7/11. Ginahulat nila ng madula ang PNP. So, tapos dito na naman sila mag-resume. So, base pwede natin i-request sa PNP nga tutukan gid nila ina lalo na nato may makita sila ang mga nagatambay gid ng mga grupo-grupo ba. Kay daw ginahulat lang gid nila ang makalabay ang aton nga patrol, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Honorable Foskablo, atong video mo, sadiin mo na nakukuha to?
Mr. Chair, nakita ko lang sa news feed nag-aagi. Boku ay daw proud gali sila ba? Tapos kung kiss aman.
Sumining imo to mismo, ikaw mismo naka ano?
Nakakita mismo sa akin nga news feed ko sa mismo. Di post lang na sa mga page ng mga racing team, racing team, like that.
Okay. So, sige, we'll...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable.
I would like to ask our SK Federation, Sir Foskablo, if san una na gagumpisa, sir, kag as you mentioned, the way lagong every night, so ano ang apitsa ina siya kag according sa imo nga pagkaibalo, sige-sige pa ba ina siya o kung panagsalang ina siya?
As for the information, wala na sila nagakarera sa hapon or mga like hasta 9:00 PM, kay daw busy pa na di ra. But pag abot 12:00 AM, siguro to 2:00 AM, di ra na sila nag-aumpisa. So, kay kung kiss amang good, mag-chat ang nagaiinform, ulihi ko na mabasahan aga doon. So, daw ulihi na kita. So, that's why ginopen ko subong sa aton nga privilege hour so that we can call the attention sa aton pulis. Kay no, hindi man actually ang mga participants di ra is mga kabataan, especially nag age siyang 16, 17, 18, amupagidabi na ang mga edad. Daw kumbaga aggressive pa na sila kung magaggressive pa na sila, pag-abot sila amuna ang mga activities di ra.
So, Mr. Chair, we have two ordinances about ina di ra ang party. Ang isa is drug racing bawal. Kaya ikaduwa atong COFR or disciplinary disciplinary time for our minors nga naapprove na nato ang ordinances sina. So, it's up to our LCE and to the capulisan ang pag-implement sina. So, tiny, Mr. SK, Mr. Foskablo, did you inform the municipal police, sir?
Yes, Honorable Foskablo.
Yes, so may arap man ako number sa pulis, but kung kiss amang good, mag-call sa sa ila, can't be rage. So, last ma last man pa man to tong una pa nga mga privilege ko. Basta subong daw wala pa ko naka-inform sa pulis, but siguro mag-amuni kadamo, amuni ang mass, masses kung ano kadamo ang gatanaw sa di ra ang activities. Syaro hindi mabalan sa aton mga pulis. So, that's why ginopen ko subong sa aton privilege hour so that kung wala mangid sila na-inform, at least mainform sila subong.
Okay, sir. Thank you, sir.
Sige. Kung siguro, kung tutukan mayo or kung may mga technology, daw claro man tong araw sa video. Oo, so... Especially tong maga-race gid nya duwa, kag atong daw may referis sila haga signal mag-o, daw claro may tsura sa tong maga-signal. Daw would like demand, dakpon sila aktwal, kiti siempre mobile sila. Kaya simplekong arang pulis, hindi man to sila man ganun.
Mr. Chair, if I could suggest, no, kung pwede nato ma kay kung iba nabigong kiss ah, may mga motor shop, may mga black market, kung pwede nato ma-identify na, kaya muna sila mismo ang mga ilang mga unit ang ginagamit di ra sa kung gabi. So, kung pwede mabisitahan sa aton mga pulis, kung pwede, general na lang. Para at least ma-aware man sila ang mayamunag kakatabo.
Aro, aro man. Ang may direct, based on this video, mapailan mo kaso ng tatlo? O daw may nagkatopag ano ng isa, dikapat? Daw tan ako kung ma-enhance siguro ni through technology, ma-identify man ni. Aro, claro man tong daw nag-referyo. Sige, so your suggestion, Honorable Foskablo, to call up the PNP next session. And ang ordinance na kita bi sa drug racing, I don't know, kung makabotang ta ordinance or maka pasat ordinance, Honorable Dular. Ano na, the dangerous stunt? Ah, ano, sa motorcycle? Ah? Hindi, ang aton ordinance, ang motong nabudlayan ng pulis kay ang aton ordinance is drug racing. Kinalan dakpon mo sila nanganagaa racing? So, kung araw sila bisan magpadlagan, lang isa-salang isa, why man siya ga-race? Or... Oo.
Ever ang motor mismo, mga kalansay, pwidi siya dakpon? No need nga ano? Um modified man siya, dapat ang magdakop, LTO, deputize nga pulis, pwidi dakpon na nila. Hindi nila need nga ulaton pa may drug race?
Oo, salain nga.
Salain nga.
Violation.
Violation.
Ah, Republic Act niti siya.
Republic Act siya, no? Hindi siya sa drug racing.
Kag, Mr. Chair, dito na false atong open pipe hasta ang mga siyap sina, ang motors siyap gani, appeal dito nga, bawal sila mag-modified sa mga motor. Tong open pipe nato kag mag-modified sa mga motors.
Sige, so there's no objection. We will call the presence of our Chief of Police next session. And we are requesting our Secretariat to prepare the proper communication addressed to our COP. Okay? So, any other matter on privilege?
Mr. Chair.
Honorable Piado.
The former mayor, incumbent board member, the late Dr. Ernesto Matias passed away last March 30, 2025. And as a former mayor and leader of this community, it is fitting for us to as a sangguyan to pass a resolution of condolences expressing our sympathy to the Bereef family of the late Honorable Mayor Matias, Mr. Chair. And if it is possible, since this scheduled interment would be on April this Saturday, if we can schedule a necrological service sponsored by the LGU or this sangguyan, Mr. Chair. This afternoon, the provincial government is scheduled to have their necrological service at 2:00 PM at the residence of the late former mayor.
This afternoon?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
LGU Isulan? May nakaschedule?
Provincial government.
Ah, provincial government.
Since the Honorable Matias is incumbent board member and a former vice governor of the province.
LGU Isulan, may schedule?
I am communicating with our secretary if she can arrange with the family so that before the scheduled interment, we can have our...
Ah, okay. But going back to your request, Honorable Piado, daw may nakakalender na?
May araw na.
Sa... Ano, pakichekla sa aton, sa first reading? Ah, okay. And if it's not yet calendar, daw may nabasabi ko to kayo na? The resolution, ah... Ay, aro, ay tama ba? Number seven?
And if it is possible also for us to also pass a resolution expressing our condolences to the Bereef family of the late Mr. Lino Piniones as one of our employees of the LGU.
Yes, number seven, Honorable Piado. Yes, number seven, Honorable Lapiado. Tama. Resolution ang palarin. Okay, anymore? If there's none, then let's proceed Madam Secretary.
So we are now on the first reading, the first item is letter received from the office of the mayor addressed to the vice mayor requesting for the urgent passing of resolution for the adoption and approval of resolution number twenty twenty five dash zero zero one M D C and resolution number twenty twenty five dash zero zero four M D C.
Ah do you have a copy?
Ah yes, your honor.
Ah what ah ano, mas kilang?
So for number number one.
Number one.
For awhile, your honor. So for number one resolution, your honor is this is approving and respectfully endorsing to the Sangunang Bayan of the Municipality of Isulan, the twenty twenty five supplemental annual investment program, number one for adoption.
What is the ah matter, what is the what is the item, subject of the supplemental A I P?
So first, we have the the subject of ah supplemental budget as for the items. Regular office operations services and regular services under the executive governance services. So there are various P P H, your honor. We have the support to strategic performance management system in the amount of five hundred thousand. Support to A B C, one million five hundred thousand. And the comprehensive land use plan and zoning ordinance, five hundred thousand. C D P formulation, five hundred thousand. Local farm to market road network plan, three hundred thousand. Conduct of the two day seminar to include moral and spiritual recovery program and activities of V A O desk officers and L P L C P C members, fifty thousand. Conduct of close encounter with C I C L and their parents, fifty thousand. Construction, repair, rehabilitation, maintenance of roads, bridges and drainage cas- canals particularly concreting of riverside, Adarles F M R in the amount of ten million pesos. Construction of drainage canal along Gabion Street, Phase Three, ten ay, sorry, concreting of riverside, Adarles, ten thousand ah ten million pesos. And drainage canal along Gabion Street, Phase Three, ten million pesos. So with a subtotal of ah forty three twenty million, with the total project, ah total cost of those projects mentioned forty three million four hundred thousand pesos.
Forty, that's zero zero one? Or ang dalawa na, zero zero one and?
Numbers, number four, your honor.
Ah sige, ang number four.
So number four is resolution approving and respectfully endorsing to the Sangunang Bayan of the Municipality of Isulan for the realignment of projects funded under the twenty percent development fund for calendar year twenty twenty five from concreting of Puruk Agan Homes to Sampao to Kudanding Junction Road into concreting of Ladore Street to Puruk Arsenio amounting to nine million one hundred fifty thousand pesos. And the construction installation of traffic lights to concreting of riverside to Adarles F M R amounting to ten million pesos. So this resolution is intended for the realignment of ah project funded under the twenty percent development fund, your honor.
Okay, ah honorable Delanon or honorable or any member who was able to attend the M D C meeting, Honorable Lapiado, akaten ka.
Mister Chair, I was present during ah the last M D C meeting. And this was ah the output of the discussion. This is the A I P supplemental. Supplemental A I P for twenty twenty five. And if it is possible, this matter be referred to the committee on finance Mister Chair for us to conduct a committee hearing.
Ah okay, ah this item is referred to the committee on ah ah zoning and ah ah infrastructure and the committee on ah finance, okay? And the committee to look into the comelac ah guidelines on the matter, no? Sige, so next item. Madam, next, ah.
So item number two, your honor is resolution number twenty twenty five dash twelve of barangay kalawag three requesting permit for the conduct of color games and card ball games. This is in relation to the fifty eighth foundation anniversary and eighteenth Warras Warras festival of barangay kalawag three.
Endorse this to the ah office of the mayor.
Item number three, resolution number twenty twenty five dash nine of barangay mapantig requesting permit ah for the conduct of cockfighting activity.
The ah when is the cockfighting scheduled?
So the schedule, your honor, is April eleven eighteen and twenty five. So this was received last March twenty six twenty twenty five.
March, ay ano?
Twenty six, your honor.
March twenty six, I think tapos na.
No, your honor, this resolution was received last March twenty six twenty twenty five and the schedule of the cockfighting is April eleven eighteen and twenty five.
Okay, so refer, refer this to the committee on games.
Item number four, letter of invitation from the Philippine Councilors League. Ah this is the twenty twenty five end term assembly and capacity development program.
Okay, so for information.
So the the venue, your honor, is Paradise Garden Resort and Conveni- Convention Center, Boracay. Scheduled on June two to four twenty twenty five. Twenty one thou- with a registration fee of twenty one thousand five hundred.
Okay, for information.
Then item number five memorandum from the office of the mayor addressed to the heads of offices. This is as regards the advice of allot allotment for the quarter ending June thirty twenty twenty five.
Okay, for information and our guidance.
We have the invitation letter for the presence of Mister Eric Fantillanan.
Okay, so Sir Eric is here. Okay, so rules are suspended. Ah what's the matter to be discussed with the Honorable, ay ay Sir Eric? Honorable Dular is recognized?
Ah yes, Mister Presiding Officer, thank you and good morning to each and everyone. So ang ah ako na kweerato Mister Chair is ang aton nga mga ah barangay ah barangay peace and all ah B Pats oh, B Pats na aton oh, sa kaya kita nga na approve na nga ordinance that we will give them ah five hundred peso pesos per month, no, sa a minimum a minimum of twenty B Pats per barangay. And during ah our budgeting, nasulod naman to siya sa M P O C and ah probably ma start kita sang paghatax ang aton nga allowance aton B Pats ah starting January. So ah since ang aton nga budget last ah session lang na mention nga na approve, so ah that's why we are inviting Mister Eric Fantillanan. Kung ah ah approve na ba sa na part of L C E, ang ah inning aton nga ginatatagay ah simply nakabaluman ang mga B Pats na aton, nagahulat sila nga kung saan o i-release kag ah madayon pa ba daw ang ilang nga gina- ilang nga ginahando nga allowance manila nga counterpart sa aton sa municipyo.
Okay, so rules are suspended. Ah okay, so Sir Eric, please proceed.
Good morning. Ay, sorry. Good morning to each and everyone, to all the members of the Sangunang Bayan of Isulan, Sultan Kadarat. Ah thank you sir for inviting me here ah to give clarification on the ordinance giving a monthly honoraria or subsidy to the members of the peacekeeping action barangay peacekeeping action teams in the Municipality of Isulan. So ah upon receipt of letter, nagkausa po kami ng ating municipal mayor and this was referred to the municipal budget officer. Ah when it comes po sa item regarding po doon sa B Pats na subsidy supposedly it should ah it should be incorporated doon, is incorporate po siya, pwede naman siya incorporate po doon sa isang item sa peace and order in public safety program which is deployment of B Pats in the barangay. Ah just to give you the timeline po of the approval of the ordinance based po sa ah it was in twenty twenty four, May twenty nine twenty twenty four, the municipal peace and order council approved the annual budget of the peace and order for peace and order and public safety programs in the amount of twenty three million six hundred thirty two thousand. May twenty nine pa po siya na approved ang council and ah the honorable members of the Sangunang Bayan of Isulan, as per research po pagpunta ko po ah ah it was adapted in session on September nine twenty twenty four. And then yung ano po, yung atin pong ano po, yung atin pong ah approval po ng municipal mayor doon po sa ordinance is September third twenty four twenty twenty four. So ibig sabihin po ah hindi po natin na include yung budget po for the subsidy of B Pats ah doon po sa approve po ng municipal peace and order council. So he and another one po because ah it although maalala ko po sir during po sa session or parang crafting po dito ordinance, andito po ako that time including the budget officer, andito din po siya. Then pinatawag siya ni mayor, then the budget officer told me naman po na it's still subject for the availability of funds. So as of now po, we have nine million pesos for the B Pats na na deploy dito po sa L G Isulan. Kung susumahin po, that's already ninety four B Pats po for nine million pesos. So wala pong ah hindi po magasya if ipasok pa po natin yung five hundred pesos na subsidy for B Pats amounting to two million forty thousand pesos. So I've asked the budget officer if ano naman baka pwedeng naka-open naman siya, though it's not final for baka pwedeng isupplemental na lang po supplemental budget, kasi yung previous year it's twenty three million, current year twenty three million din po yung budget, so walang walang additional sa M P O C po kasi.
Honorable Dular.
Ah during sang budget ah ari magkita si Eric, diba, si budget officer ari man? So ah gina- gipagawaas ko na na nga naghambal gani si ma budget nga sa M P O C lang na ton kuhaon, batay ano man to nga pagbudgeting natin na ton. So ah ang akon gani tong inaunauna nga magfull siya sa ah October, ah November, December, ang magstart kita sa paghatax ang tag five hundred. So akon nga ginambal si budget nga base ko na December, pwede nato matagaan nga dora ah lam sam nila tag one thousand five kada isa. So naghambal si ma budget nga January talang umpisa, nga wala problema hambal niya sa budget sina kaysa M P O C takuaon. Agabato ginambal mo nga aton yanga inning B Pats dili sa municipyo. Ang ginimuan ta iya sang ordinance, hindi nga B Pats sa municipyo kundi ah B P barangay peace and order team gidiya nga tong twenty per barangay, ang motong aton nga ang ordinance dito nakasulod ang basta ang mayang funds.
Ah yes?
Yes, ah honorable Dular, sir, ah tama po siya, under po sa item na ah deployment of B Pats in the barangays, doon po sana dapat kung nagkaroon ng dagdag sa budget, doon po kasi siya dapat ikarga. Kasi yung budget po as I've said po is ah for twenty twenty ah twenty twenty five is yung advice ni budget officer, nung ginawa po yung budget is status quo lang. So walang wala siyang ibinigay na additional budget for twenty twenty five para i for subsidy or honoraria para doon sa B Pats. Ah kasi although kung hindi natin ganun yung explanation ko sa kanya of the nine million pesos sana, kung hindi naman talaga siya na spend for the, kung hindi siya puno ng B Pats, maka-spare sana doon ang two million, kaso nga pala is ah no twenty twenty three, doon parla na sagad yung budget lahat na nagdagdag na mga B Pats up to twenty twenty four. So kung yung two million po na para po sa subsidy po ng ating mga B Pats sa barangay supposedly new item po sana yun siya, kaso nga lang hindi niya kami nabigyan ng pagkakataon na makapagdagdag doon, so nagstay lang sa twenty three million six hundred thirty two thousand. As is lang po yung budget ang twenty twenty four atsaka twenty twenty five.
Mister Chair. Diba Mister Sir Eric, ikaw man aminabol ka, naghuo ka sa at that time pagkwestyon ko. Ikaw mismo naghuo ka, ho sa M P O C talang ni kuhaon nga budget, diba? Oh, so ako nagsalig ako nga dito kuhaon ang budget sina, that's why nga ginahukay ko ina siya. Kay kudisi puntah, ang mga aton mga sibilyan volunteers lang ng mga tanud ta, no? Ah kaluoy man, pilagilagila budget sa barangay, tapos hindi pa ta makasubsidy sa ilad dili sa municipyo. So dapat gin- tapos naghuo naman ka muli budget sa tong nga nabagitan na nga nagululo gani kamu sa akon nga January talang naumpisan, so anong natabo nga amo sina siya?
Ah ari na lang. May we request our secretary to flash on the screen ang breakdown or ang budget ta ah for M P O C for twenty twenty ah for MPUC for twenty twenty five para makita tang breakdown ta.
Sir, can I ano po?
Ah, sige, sige.
Ah, opo sir, I agree po dun sa statement, yun that I was here naman po that time, no, during sa pag-create nito. And ah, ah for information po din, ah we are, we are dependent with the municipal budget officer. So yung sinabi niyang status quo po, yung budget for peace and order ibig sabihin, yun lang din po yung ginaya namin in the previous year. So supposedly, kung na-push through, sana yun siya, ah magdagdag tayo ng ah higit two million. But then yun lang po yung sinabi niya, kasi sa amin, status quo lang yung twenty twenty four and ah wala din kaming choice, kundi yun lang ah yung budget din po yung gawin natin. And this was approved ah during the time of ah Honorable Attorney Arnold H. Armada, as acting municipal mayor, noong May twenty nine. Ah, although late na din siya na sa miss Sangkuri Ang Bayan, but then ah wala ding naidagdag po si ano po.
Stop na 'yang pag scroll, balik sa first page. Okay. Ah. Amon eh, Sir Eric, tong nag-acting mayor ko ako ini nga breakdown, daw gusto ko na niya i-correct that time. Ini magambal ka, lockup, robbery, theft, lockup, murder ah off plan programs hindi, hindi maklaro kung di nila spend ni ano ba, hundred fifty thousand, di niya ni-spend na ah, daw Amoning isa sa to, gusto ko ma dot more specific ang iyang item. Kung ibutang mo nalang gini gasolina ni, ibutang tagi ni fuel ni. Kaya ang matabo abisin ni, ang nakabutang diri, motor naping, robbery, theft. Pero I don't know kung anong break pag-spend nila sinin, breakdown nila sinin, basi laban, fuel gap po ni siya. Na, daw amon siya, para daw ma-figure out tagi, kung di ta ginaspend ang kwarta ta, ano ba, amon eh, MPUC. Okay. Sige, ah scroll up. Pangita ko tatong nine thousand sang
Nine million po siya.
Ay, nine million, sorry, sang ah O pag-abot diri may lockup gapon, anti-illegal drugs.
Ah, Mr. Chair. Can I have a sort of explanation?
Sige, sige, Sir Eric.
Yung ano po kasi
Stop na 'yang pag ano.
Ganito po kasi Mr. Chair, ah yung peace and order and public safety program po actually naaalala ko din po yung sinabi niyo before na sana i-itemized po. However po, meron po kasing portal, yung peace and order and public safety compliance monitoring system. Ah like, doon po nakalagay ito mga program na dapat nating pundohan, ito lang, ito po siya yung mga programs. When it comes po kasi, programs kasi po yung hinihingi na, hinihingi doon. Like take for example, yung conduct of youth summit. So yung conduct of youth summit, mag-aappear yan siya doon. Yung target mo for each year, tatarungin ka ilang youth summit yung target mo. Kasi program yung kailangan, so may isa ka. And doon po sa PPMP, na lang po ina-itemized yung ah expenditures, kung saan po napupunta yung ah halimbawa, yung hundred fifty thousand, which is sinasubmit naman po prior year para November of twenty twenty four, sinasubmit po doon sa municipal budget office. Including po yung lockup, masabi natin saan napupunta yung lockup, that's true na napupunta din sa fuel. So ah doon po sa compliance monitoring system, tinatanong niya din kasi doon kung ilang program yung nakakandak natin, for example, may lockup ta, yung lockup on anti-illegal drugs one. Yung ganun po siya, naka-program po kasi ang reporting doon, hindi po siya based doon sa utilization po ng ah like fuel, office supplies, hindi po. Pagdating din po sa budgeting doon sa portal, ah kung magkano yung actual na na-spend nila, yun lang din po, or na-obligate, yun din po yung i-aappear doon. So technically, doon na lang siya talaga makita sa kanilang PPMP kung saan po napupunta.
Sige, diretso nalang ta sa concern na ni ano, ni Honorable Dular. Arey, deployment, okay. Okay, sige, stop na 'yang. So far sa items diri, ini nine million salari niya sang BIPat ah kung baga municipal paid the BIPat, ano
Yes, opo sir, that's true po. If, hindi po yan na-itemai, kung hindi po yan nag-status quo, tatanggalin sana yung municipal dyan, kasi dyan na lang din po natin iinclude yung ah appear. Pwede po tayo magkaroon ng revision ng PUPS plan, pero by twenty twenty six na po kasi medyo mahirap ang revision within the period na twenty twenty two to twenty twenty five, then twenty twenty five na, pag-i-pa-itemai siya medyo mahirap.
So in short, Sir Eric, why di dyan ma-include tong honorarium sang BIPat kada barangay?
Yes.
Kaya simple ang ano to, atong ordinance sa yata is five hundred per month, to 'yan.
Five, ah yes po, five hundred per month po
Times twenty.
Times twenty BIPats per barangay, that's three hundred forty BIPats ah total. Times seventeen. Ano, seventeen barangays times twenty BIPats is three hundred forty, times three hundred forty BIPats, times five hundred per month one hundred seventy thousand per month, times twelve months, two million forty thousand. So because
Pila, pila.
Two million forty thousand for the whole year.
Duh, hindi, ah, daw, daw, hindi, man gi dakugin.
Oh, yes, sir. Yung ano lang po sir, in my level po kasi because the budget officer informed us, in na-status quo yung budget, so it's regardless, yung program kasi ng twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four is already ah twenty three million six hundred thirty two thousand.
Sige, pakiscroll down pa. Pero, we have that ordinance.
Yes.
Thank you. The most siguro, masupplemental na lang, kung may kaso. Eh, wait a minute, ari ng ano na approved ta. Ang nine million, gali to 'yan, sa aton ang to 'yan BIPat. Kaya ang BIPat 'yan sa municipyo gareceived to 'yan monthly
Eight thousand.
Ah compensation, though equivalent sa JO siguro or more?
Ah, sir, ah, if I may, fixed rate sila at eight thousand pesos per month. Kaya ang JO na aton, abi no work, no payment. Pero sila, actually, kung may absent, sila, daw gina-divide lang na siya kung pila ang number of days pag gina-minus man, itever may absent sila, pero naka-fixed rate sila at eight thousand per month.
Ninety four BIPats na.
Ninety four BIPats. Included na dira ang traffic enforcers, that's eight thousand per month. Seven hundred fifty two thousand per month, times twelve is nine million twenty four thousand. So by second semester, it's ah probably kinanglan magbawas sang at least isa. Kaya actually, kung sa computation, ninety three lang tayo.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable.
So ah, Mr. Eric, Pantilanan, ano lang ang the best nga solution sina, so i-supplemental na lang.
Ah, once again, good morning, sir. Ah, if, ah, in terms of, actually, naka-open up naman si budget officer, in terms, in terms of supplemental budget po, better po siguro, sir, if ah by Monday po, baka pwedeng ma-invite si municipal budget officer ah to discuss on its process, kay as of now, nasa official travel sila sa Zamboanga for PF MAT. Maupod man tanin siya today, pero kay, atong Monday, kaso lang kay nag-travel sila pagkawan, so tapos halid diman kita thirty one. Although naka-open up niya naman, sir, so I suggest po na baka ma-invite siya for that purpose.
Sige. Ah
Last word, Mr. Chair.
Ba't ta sa next session?
So ah, ining mga ordinance is tanin, Mr. Chair, no? So ah kay ah, furnace copy man ang aton budget officer. Ah, ang aton nga spokal preso na kabalo man siya kay ah pag-public hearing, arak man niya po. So tapat mga amoning ah ordinance is tapat, na preparahan inisya, kag na-bagitan inisya. Kay last year pa man inisya, so ah tanin, wala na status quo inang aton nga MPUC budget, no, nadugang dita ni, gamay man lang tanin, duka million sobra. So ah ah next session, Mr. Chair, request na aton siguro siya, Madam Budget Officer, for clarification, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Ah. Amo gini mag ah breakdown, Sir Eric, sang budget sang MPUC? Or sa Luisado may
Sa peace and order and public safety program po 'yan po ang magappear. But then ah sa budget po, meron po 'yan silang itemized na nasubmit sa office of the budget officer for PPMP, na abito siya, sir. Except lang sa mga support to municipal trial court, kag provincial prosecutor, kay daw ang pagkabalo, the honorarium. Do may mga naassignan na sila, yung personal nga nagahimo na sina, diretso na sa budget office. Bali ang magappear na lang dira ang iyang ah ah total per PPMP per office or per implementing unit.
Sige. So we'll invite our budget officer, Honorable Dular, next session, okay? And ah we'll request our secretary to send the written communication to our budget officer. And also, Sir Eric ah, sige lang, we'll send another invitation to you para formal man pag-attend mo dito. Yes, Honorable Lapiado.
Um, Mr. Chair, in addition to the invitation to our budget officer may we also request that this um, sa gunyan this office be given a copy of the PPMP for us to know if what's the actual ah use or utilization of the project. Ah, since ah ang PPMP or the public procurement management plan ah nakabuta akong dito tong actual ah purpose or breakdown sang budget, Mr. Chair.
Ah Sir Eric, ang inyong PPMP, ah wala ka magasubmit as a matter of procedure sa SB, no?
Wala na po, sir. Bali po yung PPMP po, sir, is sa budget office po sinasubmit. Ah, each po 'yan item, meron po siyang corresponding PPMP, and yun nagpe-prepare po, signed by the ano na po ng PN for example, if community far prevention plan or activities, one million, ang mag-prepare na din po is CBJ, BFP. Support to MLGO, kasi merong honorarium, office supplies. Pero pinapa-indicate namin doon sa PPMP, including yung honorarium, sir para malaman na, para makita na four hundred thousand, like for example, yung binibigay sa kanila.
Okay. Ah In connection with the request of Honorable Lapiado tanan ba nga item diri, may PPMP na?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so
Lahat po ng item, most especially ah those items request, requiring purchases so dapat may PPMP, pero gaya na sabi ko po, kay po yung support to MLGO, pinapaappear din po namin yung PPMP nila. Kasi may office supplies kasi siya eh, except yung trial court siguro, sir, at prosecutor, kasi honorarium lang, wala na.
So meaning, tanan ni siya, ang PPMP mo nakabuklet, ay nakalamp?
Ah, yung, pero as, yung nagsasubmit po ng PPMP sa yung role lang po natin po sa MPUC, sir, is ah sa proposals lang nila, or pagbibigay sa kanila ng budget. So the PPMP po usually, ah piniprepay nila and directly sinasubmit po sa municipal budget office. And every time po na meron silang utilization, meron kasing inaattach talaga na PPMP kasi hindi na si budget nag-aallow ng ah expenses na walang PPMP. But then, sir, if you wish na ano, idalhin na lang din namin by Monday yung PPMP, I will, ah, ano, the budget officer na magingi kami doon ng kopya.
Okay, thank you, Sir Eric. Okay, so if there are no other, no more questions to Sir Eric? Yes, Honorable Argent, palasino.
Ah, this is not related to that, Mr. Chair, pero just a question kay Sir Eric, naka-off the record, off the record.
The Chair would like to thank the presence of Sir Eric. And again, Sir Eric, our request again for you to be present next session. But we will send the proper communication. Okay, so, rules are restored. So, next item.
So, the next item on the first reading is, Your Honor, as we have mentioned before, this is from the Office of the Mayor, Your Honor, requesting for the passing of resolution of condolences for the former Mayor, late Dr. Ernesto Echimachas and Mr. Lino Cipin Yunes. Administrative aid one.
Okay, so, schedule this for second reading. Please, sir.
So, there are no more items on first reading, Your Honor. Well, proceed now to the committee reports. So, the Committee on Games and Amusement will render its report.
Okay, so, Honorable Generaline Mihia is recognized.
Good morning, everyone. Committee on Games and Amusement, Committee Report Number 2025-05, First One to the referred matters to this committee, the committee Motopropayo perules the request from Barangay di Lotilia and Barangay Bambad as the same is no longer required to conduct a committee hearing. First item, Resolution Number 18-2025 of Barangay di Lotilia, requesting the Honorable Mayor Marites Cape Paliasige to allow the cockfighting and pawakan activities for charitary purposes in celebration of the Balik Bayan program for overseas Filipino workers on April 2, 9, and 16, 2025. Second, Resolution Number 2025-026 of Barangay Bambad, requesting for the approval to hold cockfights on April 12, 1926 in connection with the Puruk Foundation anniversary of barangay or Puruk when they are born. Item number one, Resolution Number 18 of Barangay di Lotilia. Resolution Number 18 of Barangay di Lotilia was received by this office and stamped by the SB Secretariat on March 18 at 2:00 PM. The schedule of cockfighting activities is on April 2, 9, and 16 to be held at Puruk Mangga proper Barangay di Lotilia. The holding of cockfighting pawakan activities aim to promote social and economic development as well as to provide entertainment for the residents of the barangay and the visiting overseas Filipino workers. The purpose of the cockfighting and pawakan activities is for charitary purposes. Item number two, Resolution Number 2025-026 of Barangay Bambad, the offered resolution was received by this office and stamped by the SB Secretariat on March 18 at 2:10 PM. The schedule of cockfighting activities is on April 12, 19, and 26 to be held at the said barangay. The holding of cockfighting activities is in connection with the Puruk Foundation anniversary of Puruk when they are born. And the purpose of cockfighting activities is to raise funds to help defray expenses during the foundation anniversary celebration of Puruk when they are born. For barangay cockfighting, the committee gave emphasis on the adherence of municipal ordinance or otherwise known as the Cockfighting Code of the municipality of Isulan, which provides that there shall be no cockfighting activities in all barangays of this municipality except during the occasion of the celebration of the barangay fiestas. The barangay concerned shall only be allowed to hold cockfighting activities for three sessions, two days before the first, the first itself, subject to the authority of Disanguni Ang Bayan. Only the barangay government shall be allowed to promote cockfighting activities in their respective barangays on the occasion of the local fiestas. The request to Disanguni Ang Bayan for authority to hold cockfighting activities shall be filed 15 days before the scheduled date of the cockfighting activities. The number of days shall be reconvened from the time such request is received and stamped by the Office of the Secretary to Disanguni Ang Bayan. The Committee on Games and Amusement finds that filing of requests have substantially complied with the provision of the Cockfighting Code of the municipality. The request of Barangay di Lotilia was based on Article B, Rules and Regulations and Guidelines on the Establishments of Cockpits, Section 4, Rules and Regulation, Number 13 of the Municipal Ordinance, Number 2009-165 ISB, which states cockfighting for entertainment of tourists or charitable purposes. The municipal mayor may also allow the holding of cockfighting for the entertainment of foreign dignitaries or for tourists for returning Filipinos, commonly of national, municipal, or barangay fund raising campaigns for charitable purposes as may be authorized by Disanguni Ang Bayan upon the latter's resolution, provided that this privilege shall be extended for only one time for a period of not exceeding three days within a year of the municipality. Finally, the concerned barangay shall secure permit from the mayor's office to officially conduct the cockfighting activities. Based on the foregoing, the committee hereby recommends Based on the foregoing, the committee hereby recommends passing, item number one, Resolution Authorizing the Municipal Mayor to Grant Permit to Barangay di Lutilia Relative to the Conduct of Cockfighting and Pawakan Activities for charity purposes in celebration of the Balik Bayan program for overseas Filipino workers on April 2, 9, and 16, 2025. Item number two, Resolution Authorizing the Municipal Mayor to Grant Permit to Barangay Bambad Relative to the Holding of Cockfights on April 12, 19, and 26, 2025 in connection with the Puruk Foundation anniversary of Bagong Silang Bambad Isulan Sultan Kudarat. Further, that these measures be deliberated on second reading this session, respectfully submitted by Committee on Games and Amusement, Chairperson Yours Truly, Vice Chairperson Honorable Darlene H. Lama and Secretary Honorable Marvin L. Delanon. That's all my committee report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so any comment or question to the report, there being none?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of my committee report number 2025-05.
Okay, so the committee report number 2025-05 of the Committee on Games and Amusement is hereby adopted and the measure recommended is calendar for second reading this session.
So, Your Honor, we have no more committee reports. We'll proceed now to the calendar business under second reading. First, we have the 2025 Revised Children's Welfare Code of the Municipality of Isulan.
Okay, so the Committee on Women and Children. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Hello. Um, good morning, Mr. Chairman. The ordinance is open for deliberation.
The... Your committee report, Honorable Darlene, is there a committee report prepared?
For second reading na lang siya.
Ah, wala na?
Last session, Sir Chairman, it was already reported by the committee.
Okay. So, the Children's Welfare Code of the Municipality of Isulan is already scheduled for second reading. So, next committee report, Madam Sir.
Mr. Chair, we are now on second reading. We will be discussing the draft ordinance by the committee.
Second reading na'ta? So, we are done with the committee report?
Yes, Mr. Chair. It was reported by Honorable Mihia last session.
So, no more item on committee report?
No more, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so let's proceed to second reading, Madam Sekateng. So, ah, we will be discussing as first item on second reading this children's code. So, the title of our ordinance is the 2025 Revised Children's Welfare Code of the Municipality of Isulan. Okay, so... So, we'll take up the ordinance section by section. Section one, uh... 2025, okay. So, next, section two. Declaration of... Okay, next, uh... Okay. Safe in the... Sige, next, letter F. Sige, next. Dugin ano siya, sige. Aki code, no? Children's code.
Children's code. Mr. Chair.
Honorable Argent Palisini.
Pro, pabalik please, pro. Uh, oh, stop, pro. Um, question lang, Mr. Chair, sa letter N. Republic Act Number 11596 or Anti-Child Marriage Law. Uh, hindi ba ni siya, daw, may conflict sa other religions na'to nga? Nagapractice sang... Di ba may other religion kasi na...
Tradicional?
Oo, tradisyon, may tradisyon sila na bata pa lang.
Ng marriage ano?
Meron kasi...
Amo ganun.
Si Blum may mga exception na derye.
Early marriage. Do siya, early marriage daw. Hindi masahap, uwa siya karapatan.
Ano na'no? Pang SGLG gapon eh?
For compliance.
Da, uigong gali, huh? LCPC. Okay, although active na nga'to nLCPC. Ano to? IL, balik, balik may gamay, ano ni siya? ILRC. Inclusion, ay... Ah, arri, Inclusive Learning Resource Center, sige. Do mga pang future ano kana, sige. Sola, from... Next. SIP. Arri, nila, balik to, balik to. Do aring question ni Honorable Argent, sige. Okojujis, pinis, isus. Okay, no, prisa. Sige, sola'to. Madam Sek, do lawig pa siguro, no? Pro do gin, ano tamalan eh? Gin consolidate nga mga laws nga... Si Prakay revise, ano siya? Children's Code. Oo. Dapat ma-adoptagin isa na lang. So, Honorable Darlene, will you move for the approval of this ordinance on second reading?
Hello, Mr. Chair. I move for the approval of my committee report, uh...
The ordinance.
For second reading.
Title, arri.
Walas ang papel.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of the 2025 Revised Children's Welfare Code of the Municipality of Isulan.
Okay, so the 2025, or the ordinance entitled the 2025 Revised Children's Welfare Code of the Municipality of Isulan is approved on second reading. And if there's no objection, this ordinance is scheduled for third reading this session. Let's proceed.
Next proposed measure on second reading is the proposed ordinance prohibiting online sexual abuse and exploitation of children or OSAEC and child sexual abuse or exploitation materials, or CSAEM in the Municipality of Isulan, institutionalizing programs for its prevention and eradication and providing penalties thereof. Thereafter, establishing a supportive environment for child victims and providing funds thereof.
Uwa ni siya nasali dito, Madam Rax? Akototo, pro may separate at ano pagitan, no? Prohibition, okay. Sige, uh, I think there's no more need for any further discussion. Honorable Darlene, can you please move for the approval of this ordinance?
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval for the ordinance prohibiting online sexual abuse and exploitation of childrens and child sexual abuse or exploitation materials in the Municipality of Isulan institute... institu... institutionalizing program for the its prevention and eradication and providing penalties thereof. Thereafter, establishing a supportive environment for child victims and providing funds thereof.
Okay. So, the ordinance prohibiting online sexual abuse and exploitation of children and child sexual abuse or exploitation materials in the Municipality of Isulan, institutionalizing program, programs for its prevention and eradication and providing penalties thereof. Thereafter, establishing a supportive environment for child victims and providing funds thereof. Is approved on second reading. And this ordinance is scheduled for third reading this session.
So, next proposed measure on second reading is the Resolution of Condolences to the Brave Family of the late, uh, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Ernesto Machas.
Okay, Honorable Apado, uh, is recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, in joint sponsor shipal members present, I move for the passing of resolution of condolences to the Brave Family of the late Honorable Mayor, also our former vice governor and board member, Dr. Ernesto Pontanilia Matias, a former mayor of the local government unit of Isulan.
Okay, so the Resolution of Condolences to the Brave Family of the late Honorable, uh, uh, Mayor, Vice Governor, and SB... uh, vice governor and SP member, Dr. Ernesto F. Matias, uh, is approved. On joint sponsorship.
Next is the proposed measure are the resolution of condolences to the bereaved family of the late Mr. Lino Peñones, administrative aide-woman under the Office of the Municipal Engineering.
Mr. Chair.
Honorable Apiedo.
Mr. Chair, in joint sponsorship by all members present, I move for a passing of resolution of condolences to the bereaved family of the late Mr. Lino Peñones, admin aide-woman of the Engineering Department Office of the Local Government Unit of Isulan.
Okay, so the resolution of condolences to the bereaved family of the late, uh, Mr. Lino Peñones. Uh, our former employee, uh, is approved on joint sponsorship.
So next proposed measure is based on the committee report of the Committee on Games and Amusements.
Here is the Chairman, Honorable, uh, morning Mihia is recognized.
Mr. Chairman, on second reading, I move for a resolution authorizing the municipal mayor to grant permit to barangay di lutilia relative to the conduct of cockfighting and pauwakan activities for charity purposes in celebration of the Balikbayan Program for Overseas Filipino Workers on April 2, 9, and 16, 2025.
Okay, so the resolution authorizing the municipal mayor to grant permit to barangay di lutilia relative to the conduct of cockfighting and pauwakan activities for charity purposes in celebration of the Balikbayan Program for Overseas Filipino Workers on April 2...
9.
9... And 16, uh, is approved.
Mr. Chairman, another resolution. I move for a resolution authorizing the municipal mayor to grant permit to barangay bambad relative to the holding of cockfights on April 12, 19, and 26, 2025 in connection with the Puruk Foundation anniversary of Puruk bagong silang bambad Isulan Sultan Kudarat.
Okay, so the resolution authorizing the municipal mayor to grant permit to barangay bambad, uh, for the holding of cockfights on April 12, 19, and 26 in connection with the Puruk Foundation anniversary of Puruk bagong silang bambad Isulan Sultan Kudarat.
So there are no more proposed measures on second reading. Well, proceed now to the third and final reading. First, we have, on third and final reading, we have the 2025 Revised Children's Welfare Code of the Municipality of Isulan.
Honorable Darlene Lama, recognize.
Mr. Chairman, I move for... For the approval of ordinance 2025 Revised Children's Welfare Code for the Municipality of Isulan.
Okay, so the revised, the 2025 Revised Children's Welfare Code of the Municipality of Isulan is approved on third reading.
Next, Your Honor, on third and final reading, we have the ordinance prohibiting online sexual abuse and exploitation of children or the OSAEC and child sexual abuse or exploitation materials or CSAEM in the Municipality of Isulan, institutionalizing programs for its prevention and eradication and providing penalties thereof. Thereafter establishing a supportive environment for child victims and providing funds thereof.
Okay, Honorable Darlene Lama.
Hello. Si Sa'im in the Municipality of Isulan institu... institutionalizing program for its prevention and eradication and providing penalties thereof and thereafter establishing a supportive environment for the child victims and providing funds thereof.
Okay, so the ordinance prohibiting online sexual abuse and exploitation of children, OSAEC, and child sexual abuse or exploitation material, CSAEM in the Municipality of Isulan is approved.
So, Your Honor, we have no more items on the third and final reading. Well, proceed now to, since we have already exposed the items in the order business, well, proceed now to the unassigned, which is, Your Honor. So, Your Honor, as you have agreed before, this is to give tribute to the former mayor of this municipality of Isulan, uh, the late honorable Ernesto Matias. We have here the proposed program for the necrological service.
2:00 PM. Eh, ano na eh, Amrox?
2:00 PM, tomorrow. Wala na butang awi. May arap pa na akcover. So this is the usual program, no? I don't know if there will be revision. We have the introductory remarks, opening prayer, opening hymn. So, for the, since, uh, the former mayor is a Catholic, we have the first reading, second reading, the gospel reading and reflection, the reading of biography, then we have the testimonies. As a public servant, as a father, may arap pa kong, as a friend or as a provincial governor ba, or... Then we have the reading of resolution of condolences, the giving of resolution of condolences. We have the posthumous award, this will be awarded by the honorable mayor, bestowal of the Philippine flag, message of condolences, response from the family, then floor offering and closing prayer. So for the message of condolences, of course, uh, we will also, um... Uh, I think we will also give the opportunity for the honorable vice mayor to give his message of condolences. So those are the proposed, uh... This is the proposed program for the necrological service. Pwede ba niyo siya i-revise?
Dila, okay na na siguro. Or mga on-the-spot lang ah revision depende sa... Sa situation or sa mga persons present, uh...
Di ang ibutang derye, kami na lang ang butang sang ano, kung sino ang mag introductory remarks.
Okay, yes.
Oo, napatabi Karo, matapos na ikey panghatag na ni Karo.
Oo, Karo.
Wala na ta-time, boss.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Apiedo.
In addition, um, as a form of respect to the late former mayor, uh, Ernesto Matias, is it possible that the flag at the ano, be ano na siya, ma-half mast siya? Um, as a tribute and respect to the late... Nakahalf mast na, ah, sige, thank. Alast dito. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Of the record, da.
No more, so session adjourned.